Our pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, no doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I got mine.
I'm the school board today. Okay.
I got mine.
All right, pending issue November nineteenth, twenty twenty four, volume one twelve, page three thirty two, minutes from November fourteenth.
So move.
Second.
Roll call Roger. Tim.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Volume one twelve, page three thirty three, payout for oh so much at J F S.
So move to pay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So move. Second.
Fred?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Page three thirty four, resignation of Shelby Christian at J F S.
So move.
Second.
Fred?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Page three thirty five, relocations.
So move.
Second.
Tim?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Page three thirty six, release of funds.
So move.
Second.
Fred?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Page three thirty seven, payment of bills to ditch maintenance.
Move to pay.
Second.
Fred?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
I got a reminder yesterday on my calendar that popped up from Randy Paul that it's time to plug in candles. Richard told me to go ahead and send the email Monday so they could get plugged in Tuesday for the day of the parade. I was just gonna send a reminder email this week and have everybody do it on Monday.
I think you might be better off doing it that way.
Okay.
Instead of waiting till the very last.
I was told every office has their own candles, everybody will know what I'm talking about when I send out this email.
Good. Done that.
Okay, and then there's two hour parking signs around the square that are posted like around the courthouse. Do we want to send another all user, all courthouse employee gentle reminder that there's two hour parking signs?
I think that might be a good idea. What do you think, Tim? Just as a reminder because there's so much going on right now with parking and the availability. What do you think, Tim?
Sure, we can send a reminder. We don't own the parking space, but we can ask them to not park around the square. Especially during the season. You have nothing, nothing to sign as far as just assigned after one twelve volume.
Yeah, I didn't have anything to put there this time.
I'm not planning on setting up today's. It'll be here this week. That'll give us a little working for this week.
Morning.
Morning, Brad.
Morning, Tim. Brad?
Morning.
Joe?
What are you doing?
All set.
All right.
Okay.
If you're ready, we're ready. Are you waiting on?
No, I'm not. At this moment, I'm gonna ask to void the executive session pending a threatened litigation. I probably asked to have Commissioner Sherman delect the presence of the carmatia over at first year.
I have a general wish.
Pending a threatened litigation.
Okay.
I'll move to go on the executive session pending, and I move second.
Fred?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
It's time?
Time is twenty nine.
Yep. Amber's here early, so I'm just gonna go ahead and have her come in because she thought she was nine thirty and not dead.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hi, I'm doing well.
Good.
I was so excited to come over here. I was here very early. I don't know why I had nine thirty in my head, so.
So it all worked out perfectly.
That's right. Brad was a fast talker, so I'll be able to give you back some time then, Miss Miller.
That sounds good. That sounds good. So how do you get?
I am adjusting well, actually.
It's been a million.
It has been very busy, so I've had the opportunity then in the last month to attend some different meetings and learn different aspects of J F S that I wasn't as familiar with. So people are very patient and inclusive with me, so seeing a lot of things that run really well across. I'm seeing a lot of things that run really well across the street and then just some things here and there that...
Need a little tweaking.
You got it, that need a little tweaking, but I'm still smiling, and so, and that's good.
Good.
And optimistic, so I, I would consider things to be going well.
And just a quick question, will you be attending when our Thursdays meet?
I will, in person, yes.
Okay, good, good for you.
Yes, that's what I have really been trying to attend as much in person, to be able to network with people and...
I, I, I would agree with you, like, in doing it in person, it, it tends to be a little bit better than online.
Uh, that's, that's what I prefer, if you spend so much time on the computer, you know, that now I'm excited to be able to get places and actually interact
That's very true.
with people.
Good. Okay.
All right, well, some exciting things to report from across the street, so for our food assistance program, we were able to serve three thousand four hundred and fifty-two individuals that are representative of one thousand six hundred and forty-one families in Hardin County. Uh, the average recipient is receiving about one hundred and eighty-two dollars and seventy-six cents, uh, so the total that was issued...
About one eighty-two point seven six, that, that sounds pretty accurate.
Yeah, it does, it does, in fact, I should just stick to the notes, don't add lip, don't add anything, because that's exactly, it's a... Each recipient received an average of one thousand eight, or I'm sorry, one hundred and eighty-two dollars and seventy-six cents. So the amount that was, uh, provided then to the Hardin County residents was six hundred and thirty thousand dollars, uh, eight hundred and... I'm sorry, six hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars for the month of October. Uh, our income maintenance, who is responsible for our food assistance and also our Medicaid program, they were recognized by the state's Medicaid eligibility quality control, um, for having accuracy of ninety percent or higher on their case reviews, which is a big deal across the state, that's something that I have learned...
That's a whole, is that banging?
It, it is, ninety percent or better, so that's what every county is striving to get to, and they achieved it.
They achieved it, very good.
And we actually had one worker, Shelby Ray, who was individually recognized for having one hundred percent accuracy.
Wow, good.
So I was very excited, I'm gonna be honoring them tomorrow at their staff meeting to congratulate them on that, and...
Thank you.
Yes, I, I will, I was super proud of them. Uh, in our Ohio Means jobs, uh, there are currently eleven active adult and/or dislocated workers, and they're also serving forty-three youth with their program in family, in their Ohio Means jobs. Adult Protective Services received ten reports of alleged abuse, neglect, or exploitation of the elderly, which resulted in eight investigations being initiated as a result of those.
And that's just current on the model.
Correct, correct. We contact with the area on aging to service the elderly and, and do our, uh, investigating and linking with services, and we've been super pleased with the feedback that we've received from the community and, and their communication with us has been excellent.
Good.
Uh, and then in Children's Services, they received ninety, in the month of October, they received ninety-six reported allegations of abuse, neglect, and dependency, which resulted in twenty-two investigations. Uh, we currently have twenty-six Hardin County kiddos that are in the agency's custody. Uh, we have paid out in the month of October in foster care, um, payments, one, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars. There is an outstanding invoice for October for an additional, uh, eleven thousand dollars, so making the total cost for October placements a little over a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, um, for the month. Um, keeping everything in perspective, you know, there is, there continues to be a placement crisis and, and the prices, um, are outrageous, the state's very mindful of that, um, but our allocations from the state only cover about a per diem of about twenty-five hundred dollars a day, and currently the per diem for the Hardin County kiddos that we have in care is over forty-five hundred dollars a day.
So two thousand...
A day.
A day behind the law.
Correct.
So thirty, like, of thirty days in a month, two thousand sixty thousand dollars.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. As far as some general, uh, housekeeping, I had mentioned Shelby Ray, who had the one hundred percent accuracy. Um, she is actually transitioning to become the new training officer downstairs in Income Maintenance, so uh, we're excited about that transition, and they've also identified a new, um, fraud investigator to transition from, uh, an Income Maintenance position to take over the, the fraud where we had a vacancy, so there aren't any additional fraud numbers on the report that I provided, so they'll be able to, to get that individual trained and get the fraud investigations back moving.
So have you been part of the, uh, activity of doing this transition, reviewing different things?
Yes.
Or sort of you separate from that?
No, I, I'm involved in the, the, kind of the strategic planning of, of how people are moving and what qualifies certain individuals to be most effective in those positions. Um, luckily, they do have, um, good candidates that come in down in the Income Maintenance Department.
So beneficial.
Yes, so they're, they're fortunate that in, in a lot of cases, people will come from other counties, so they have some experience, which allows your, um, you know, your folks that have been there and shown their productivity, the opportunity then to be able to transition to different levels of increased responsibility in the agency, but I meet with, with the department heads every week, um, to get updates and, and discuss any staffing concerns, any struggles, successes, so I feel pretty first on the, what is going on in, in their department.
And let's face it, with, with the dynamics of, of that entity over there, you have to be tabloid, you have to understand everything that's going on and be in a position to make that decision, whatever it is.
Okay.
So, very good.
Thank you. Uh, we currently have three openings in Children's Services, um, and there are two openings currently in the Income Maintenance Department as well, but they have interviews for Income Maintenance, uh, I believe still this week, and we've had a couple of interviews with, with Children's Services as well.
So we get those interviews put into place?
Yes, and, and screening them.
That kind of an average, is, or is that just because of the changeover now?
Um...
Any feeling? I know we kinda go through a lot, and some people, it just isn't for them, they get in there, that's, it's a very, what do I wanna say? Herb wracking job, nothing else. Some people, this is not for everybody, so I know you always get some changeover, but, uh, has it settled down many, or is it still about the same?
I would say it feels about the same, I, I have instituted the, um, the leave survey where people, um, where I have HR meeting with the individuals when they are leaving the agency to get an overall feel of things that they felt, you know, they liked about their job, things that were challenging for their job, to see if, if I can see any trends or things that, you know, we could improve on, but as far as child welfare goes, it's, you know, it's always a high stress and, you know, for, for some individuals across the board, it's about what is convenient for their family, you know, whether it be another county, um, people have considered insurance, you know, as something that they evaluate, um, so I haven't really seen a lot of consistent themes of what makes people really transition, but a lot of, um, things that just work better for their family, that, that they don't have any, um, overarching concerns with, with their role at, at the agency, just better fit for their family.
Okay.
Uh, but as, one of the things that I, I wanted to just mention, um, the state, as far as for Children's Services, is always concerning there's a staffing crisis, you know, for child welfare, and the state piloted a, um, fellowship program two years ago where, uh, they went out to colleges and universities and talked about the importance of child welfare, uh, reached out to social work majors, psychology majors, sociology, any type of related field that we consider, um, and they piloted this program that has been quite successful, they put the, uh, the students through our core training and, um, placed them at different agencies and allowed them to do some on-the-job shadowing training, um, and what the state is doing, they have picked it up then, the Northwest Counties actually were the ones that piloted it, presented it to the state, and the state is picking it up. So what happens is that a county would hire this student as a county employee, and then they are overseen by the fellowship program. Like, we provide them the opportunity to train and, and have, uh, work experience here, they're compensated as a county employee, but the state reimburses all of the costs.
So the state would reimburse one hundred percent?
One hundred percent.
The value of that compensation?
Yes, so, um, previously, it hadn't been considered, uh, but I think that it could be beneficial. They're opening it up to universities and colleges that are at least close in our area, um, so if it gives an opportunity to bring other Hardin County...
What, what, help me out to understand, and again, I, I look at this kind of like an internship and everything like that. Uh, is this for a certain time period, and then by the year's time period, then that person would move on someplace else? Or is it's an unlimited time period where they can continue?
The fellowship is offered to juniors and seniors in college, um, so you could have a fellow for up to two years.
I see.
And then when they graduate, you, as the employer, would have the opportunity then, if you had been pleased with their work and they were interested in staying in the area, to hire them then on as a full-time, or the idea becomes then, if, say, they were from Seneca County, you know, um, then that's where they were gonna go home and to after graduation, Seneca County could then hire them, knowing that they have all of these requirements completed and, and they've been able to show that, that they can handle the job, and so it, it kind of works both ways, then if Seneca had had a, a fellow there that was at Tiffin, you know, university, that's from this area, we would have the same opportunity.
Okay, good. Well, makes sense, it, it's one of those things, you're, you're, uh, working with a student who is getting extremely good training, and then you're also understanding the student themselves, their, their, you know, pros and cons, and, you know, all that sort of thing, so it makes sense that then, once it's completed, that then you can have the opportunity to hire them full-time or not.
And then what's great, I think, too, for these students, is they get a real-world taste of, of what child welfare is, and then they will know, if when they graduate, if this is really something, then...
They'll understand it, sure.
Yes, absolutely, I, I think it, it presents a great out-of-the-box kind of thinking to, um, hopefully increase the workforce in, in child welfare, so I, I would like the opportunity to pursue that.
Thank you, it, it makes sense.
Uh, and then, and I, I've not...
Now, you said this was Northwest Ohio.
They were the area that initially piloted the program.
Okay.
Um, and we did not participate in the initial pilot, uh, but now the state has seen some proven success in it, so now they're opening it up to all of the regions, and I had a meeting with, the Wood County was actually the, the county that carried the heavy for, for the pilot, it was kind of their, um, baby, so to speak, so, um, I met with them just to get more information to see then, um, how things worked and, and what the state is doing and how they support these, these students, and so, uh, after that, I wanna, I wanna get them on this, on this opportunity.
It sounds like a great opportunity.
Thank you. Uh, and then, I, I'm not sure if this is the appropriate forum to ask this question, but we have a, a kiddo at, that's in our custody that has some belongings, is there any place that, that the county has for storage of, of any items? Right now, they, they sit in our conference room, but I, I didn't know if that's something...
How big of an area, what are you talking?
I would say if you put both of your desks together, height and width.
So juvenile?
Yes, sir.
I don't know, might have to ask Brad. I guess we take hold of their possessions when they're in our agency?
Yeah, they're, they're actually in our permanent custody, so they don't have family that they will be going back to, that this individual child resides in a residential facility, so she's only allowed to have...
So much.
Yes, and, and, this is, this is all they have, you know, are, are the things that they come with, and, and they have been in our conference room, but it looks...
The, the S K edition has some space, um, where we've, FCFC had put some coats and stuff in there that Richard was going and letting them store there, so there might be room.
Do we have to secure it somewhere?
No, 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 these, she's a younger child.
Yeah, I guess you'd have to be protected somehow, but wouldn't anybody just walk in there and walk away with it?
Certainly, it's boxed, really.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Yeah, my only concern would be the fact that it's such a limited, small area, that when it's all said and done, it could get lost in the shuffle, you know, I mean, a larger storage unit.
Is it something they're coming and accessing all the time?
No.
It's just, it's just sitting there.
It's just, it's just, and it's been for some time, but as we get back to more and more meetings, and that's the largest conference space that we have, and yeah, see if there, if there was an option available.
So, so it's just like one individual, one child?
Yes, sir.
Could there be the opportunity for more? Could be.
Potentially.
Potentially.
Potentially, we try to look for, um, any relatives or other individuals that are, will keep their things for them, um, but for this specific child, she doesn't, she doesn't...
Yeah, I'm sure maybe find something worth, right, but Richard, no, he'd need to move it somewhere from one building to another, but...
All right, well, he'll be happy to see me with a rip.
Yeah, he'll be kinda get social, but...
He does, he does, he's a good sport. But, and then the last thing, I, I just wanted to respectfully request the ability to close our office at ten AM for the day on December the twentieth, I have a, that's the last Friday before the Christmas holiday, I have, uh, a team building, I have a trainer coming in to do an agency-wide team building event.
Oh.
Uh, that for Income Maintenance, the Ohio Means Jobs, Children's Services, fiscal, all of us, um... Uh that for incoming, we have these jobs, children services, fiscal, all of us would have the opportunity to participate.
So so all of the employees would still be there for this team building event?
Yes.
It's not like they would be leaving, they would be all there still working.
Yes, yes.
And you're closed to the public.
Yes.
Very good, make sure you post it somewhere on the door or front door or somewhere. It's closed for the hours or day.
And and you say that's December twenty?
Yes.
Sure. It's a Friday, is it is Friday is usually busy day or is it a slower day?
Generally slower because our hours are shorter on that day to the public as well. So the day ends at two thirty, um so.
So generally, it's two thirty, so, okay.
Yes, so um you know, that when I asked, you know, what would be the best day to to complete this activity? That was a day that was suggested, so I thought it made sense that the hours were that we were closed to the public were shorter than than another day.
You can push it like a week before or work more, it whatever, something give fair warning to public that would have to access. Maybe emergency, no. But yeah, that's good.
Well, that was my list of things, are there anything other questions or outstanding?
No, I asked my question the very first one.
You did.
How are you doing?
Yeah.
When did you start?
Cause we know that, you know, you've got an awful lot going on over there, not only with learning the the job that you're doing and everything. But also too with a lot of people movement and things of that nature, so just trying to get in, you come in with a smiling face, so that's 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 the big part of the story.
Yes.
When did you start your job again?
October the seventh.
October seventh. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Right, thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming in.
And we'll see you tomorrow.
Yes.
I'll be there, of course.
Oh, great, great, well, I will see you then, I'll be coming from another meeting in the with the Northwest director, so. I'll be on the road a lot, I'll see you then, thanks again, it was good seeing you, it was nice seeing you.
Um, a couple weeks ago.
Okay.
I think. When did Dad have his surgery? The eighth of November?
Uh-huh.
Yeah. So yeah, she's been out for a couple of weeks.
Did you say Chris was on vacation this week? Is that right? IT Chris?
Yes.
Okay. I don't bother anybody. I'll still get it.
A good weekend or a good week. It Tuesday I used to.
Yeah.
This week's been so fast. Well, I'm fine over there.
I still think my records are less though, right? Yes. Yeah. I told P that I'm going to probably this afternoon once I'm caught up because I couldn't get to it yesterday.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
And then I'll just send it to them and they'll review it. But yeah, I.
Yeah.
It just goes through me and maybe a little slower now because I'm.
David. And. Okay. Okay. Uh, yes, you could. Uh. Yeah, it's okay. It may. I'm sitting here. So. Okay. Mm-hmm. Sure. Okay, I'll be here. Yep. See ya. Was Tori back?
Mm-hmm.
Was Tori back?
She should have come in, sorry.
Yeah. I don't know her. Did you have a conversation with Mike on how he's gonna disperse that?
Yes, you did.
As in the lump sum? Partial?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, lump sum, we agreed to.
I'm sorry.
The lump sum that we agreed to.
Okay. Out of general fund.
Mm-hmm.
Out of general fund.
Mm-hmm.
Lump sum.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Can you hear us ready?
Mm-hmm.
About number four three, the resolution has over one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to part.
I got it. I'm copying it right now.
Oh.
Correct. He just doesn't have the copy of it.
Oh, perfect.
Okay.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
I was like, no, he doesn't. Yeah. He just said he didn't have a copy, so I just have a copy.
Oh, okay.
Should print too.
Yeah.
I'm gonna run this up to Mike, but we did do this on the twelfth. The release. I just probably didn't send a copy up to him.
Ah.
So he just doesn't have the copy.
That's what we really, I can see that that's the main thing. I was just looking at the fact that we did do something. And that's basically what we needed.
Yeah, so I'll run that up to him so he has that.
That would be perfect.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I thought we did that last week.
I I didn't, I'll be honest with you, I was getting a little bit confused because Mike was talking about another different thing and I was getting a little.
We had to do that first, the additional appropriation and then once that's done, then we pass the release.
He had the appropriation, the additional appropriation, but he for some reason didn't seem to have the resolution, so.
And that's probably just, I just didn't copy it.
Yeah. No problem. Yeah, if you could get what Mike.
Yeah, I'll take that side of the table because I have a couple other things for us to do.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Tori.
You're welcome. You like our visit? Oh, I don't know what you.
Hello? Yeah, I called there, just checking on you. Yeah? Yeah, yeah, a little... All right, so by there, I think there would be one to go up to the apartment or maybe just want to start collecting stuff? Well, I'm gonna do it here, I'm gonna do it. Well, some of us, uh, they're here. I have those. Right, this is, and, uh, that is Friday, maybe for, so, uh... So, yeah, you're located here, that's your one. Yeah. Well, we're all up, maybe in a second. If all the weather's not zero. Yeah, well, we don't... As far as... We have everything, you can do that, and it's good move. I will do it. Right. And the channel, the channel, it's not moving, and... Yeah, people, one member is, uh, up there, and he still hasn't been able to get that. We're, well, okay, and... No problem.
I don't think, so I just did the, 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 I'm gave Jay advice, very, very, maybe see if he can, I also do a lot of work. And, and then push the button, it's very, very small. President, well, I got her, so I'm gonna give it to her, she handles it.
Where did you all, you...
I was trying to pick it up. We're, we're bagging up greenery, so it's running to Oregon, I was hoping for greenery to take home. Yeah. Oh, people have greenery, tell me. Oh, my gosh, where, huh? Okay. Tell me, why don't you, why don't you tell me? Yeah, I'm saying, you can, if you bring them in here, we can pass it out, it's all there, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Someone, where, where am I, ma'am?
Okay, um...
I don't know, for, no, I haven't heard, you know, for a big while, yeah.
All right, so I'll raise up my calendar, but Amy Long, no, then, she's also gonna get off that room. Thank you. Well, Amy and her people, you know, are probably struck under the act of leaving the planet and the situation was a bit more... But that was in the following investigation, you know? How's the signing? Almost greatest week ever.
You're saying that, if it was, general, maybe, but let's be, um, not quite agree on, or, or, they have no zero sign. I don't think we're gonna be working today. Or eat the snow tomorrow.
I know. I do my work in snow, I can stay warm on my, you know, say, moving.
Yeah.
Uh, we're good, so, that's my gamble.
You don't like the weather? Um, yeah, but I always get a little snow, it's all, all right, I can wear a, a, and you can keep, keep dry. Get a saddle, or is it a plan?
All right, I got everything you need?
From us.
That's a loaded question.
That's a loaded question.
Sure, I don't have any, but, so, you have nothing to do, so...
You want me to talk to this?
I don't, sorry, I got zero.
Is he in the county, but?
Yep.
Our county?
Right, he's out of county, but he has Austin control, so like, maybe...
Did you get Austin? All right, okay. Boston, though, will be in the county? So can you watch the whole? I'd like to specifically send you a, one copy here, one copy here, one copy...
You got everything you need?
I think I do.
All right, I got it, you go.
You got really good.
Yeah, I'm almost gone.
I wanted to double check this, but...
Yeah? Okay.
So I should be all set?
Yeah. I think I'm all set. I missed last night.
Hmm?
I missed last night.
What was last night?
The ladies' Republican... Dinner.
Was that next night?
Or, no, last night, last night. I was gonna say, I had eighteenth on my brain, I had it written down there. That's right, it is an assembly, because it's the Christmas.
Yeah, that's, that's December.
Well, I had a note here that said it was last night.
Oh.
So, Anthony, that's right, and that means December.
We're serving on that one.
Yes, that's why I was saying, I felt bad, I thought, I did, I missed it. That would be a good one. We're all done for the day.
For the second time.
Yeah, but the first time for me.
Well, yes, well...
Take care of Timmy.
There you go.
Yeah, um, she probably is, uh, um, very careful today. Also, because, 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 they're, they're not green, so... They're gonna pay for the nails, so, maybe, we, we... We'll see.
I know, I just... Yeah, there's the same thing with the bottom. Are you down here?
Sure.
See you later.
Yeah, see you.